And crackers?
Yeah.
Setting the bar, we're setting the bar low on expectations.
Another pair of glasses, Brian, because you're going to have so much reading to do that your eyeballs are going to bug out.
Yeah. You're all right.
You don't have to read any of my stuff, you can just approve it.
It does make things go faster.
It comes from this stellar group.
Absolutely.
This is it.
That's where the magic happens.
Nothing to worry about. Are, are we ready to?
Let's see if we can go.
Okay. Planning Commission meeting for December 8th, 2014 is called to order. The first item on our agenda is continuance of SP 14-16, site plan and design review, CD 14-01, code interpretation, similar use, and US 14-05, geological hazards overlay district. The applicant submitted a request that the Planning Commission review their application to construct a new specialty retail structure for the American Tire within the mixed-use downtown district on January 12th, 2015. And then we have a request for continuance.
So unless the Commissioner asks questions for me, we are recommending that we continue the public hearing to the date certain of January 12th, 2015. If anyone in the, in the present tonight, Commissioner-elect Shaw would like to testify, he certainly can, but otherwise, we would recommend continuance.
Just for my own clarification, we haven't seen this item yet, have we?
This was the first evidentiary hearing tonight.
Okay.
So I think there are swarms of people here to discuss this item.
Yes.
I move that we continue.
Second.
I actually have some questions. I'm sure you knew that I would.
It's every minute and a clock.
Of course. So I guess one of the things that I am always puzzled by is that I, this is just me personally, I hardly think of this area as part of the downtown. I mean, I know it's got that zoning, but it seems a little misplaced.
It threw me off, too.
I'm assuming that the application may or may not be complete? Or is it complete?
It is complete.
It is complete?
Yes.
Okay. And they are requesting a similar use determination because this use is not listed in that, I mean, I looked through the district, I didn't see anything that was said that particular.
Right, really, what it comes down to is a similar use determination. We don't allow auto-oriented businesses in the mixed-use downtown, so the question is, is American Tire, which sells obviously tires for vehicles, you know, is that an auto-oriented retail use or not? That's the, at a very high level, of what the discussion is about, about the similar use determination.
Well, you, you said something similar to what I was going to say, because that was my recollection, that uses that were auto-oriented were not really allowed, so I'm, I will be very interested in reading the staff report to find out what, or their, their submittal, what they're thinking that they are similar to. Because we do have a lot of non-conforming automobile-oriented uses in that zone, but they have been there, oh, years, many, 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 many years.
And so, yeah, I mean, that's the crux of the discussion. Wrong people, sorry.
I talk.
But without going into more detail, without the applicant here, nor the staff report, but that is, generally speaking, what the discussion is about concerning the similar use determination.
Did I hear you say oil, though? I mean, if there's no oil involved, does that still make it, or is it just?
He didn't say that.
No, and I'd really not, I'd prefer not to deliberate tonight without the applicant here.
I just have one quick question. It delineated around the Home Depot site. Is it replacing Home Depot or co-locating in that tax law?
So right at the corner of 213, and why am I drawing a blank on the name of the new street?
Washington Street?
No, well, the old Washington Street.
The Prairie Schooner.
Prairie Schooner Way, thank you.
Which is a weird name.
Right where the Home Depot stand, freestanding sign is, there's actually a lot on that corner that was part of the original Home Depot construction.
I just wasn't sure if they were replacing, or, because there was nothing here to.
New building.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's there if you want to go look for it.
Yeah, no, I, I know what he's talking about.
No, I pulled up the pre-app meeting notes and a few other things, because I kept thinking, well, where is this going to go? Because it said southwest corner, and I'm thinking southwest corner of Washington 213, and I'm thinking, there's parking lot there. So, okay, onward and upward, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion.
In a second.
In a second. Question. Commissioner Espy?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye.
Commissioner Kidwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Henkin?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayby?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
We didn't want you to feel left out.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a work session for the Heritage Tree Ordinance.
Okay, I'll be giving you an update on this. Starting in June and going through October of this year, the Natural Resources Committee began a process of drafting amendments to the current Heritage Tree Ordinance. And this is the code by which a tree or stand of trees may be designated officially by the City Commission as a heritage tree or grove to date. There have been four trees and one grove designation. The four trees that have been designated are all on private property, and the grove designation is for the Waterboard Park area. And at the direction of the City Commission, the NRC drafted these amendments, and the October draft is what is in your packet. The first set of amendments that adopted this code process was in 2008, I believe, as part of a legislative file. I just checked that, and that is the case. So it was reviewed as a Planning Commission decision and a City Commission decision. Normally, trees and public street tree ordinances are not land use decisions. They don't affect the use of land or zoning, in the sense that we think of. And subsequently, the idea here is to discuss this at the Planning Commission level, get your comments and concerns, and then we would be taking this up to the City Commission for adoption through either a process of resolution or possibly a hearing, but most likely just by resolution. The basis of what these amendments include in, was to provide a little more structure to the process, both in terms of timeliness, and also in terms of providing more clarity for the process based on the location of the tree or trees. So we have provided one section of the process, which looks very much like a completeness review process from the Land Use Code, providing for a 30-day completeness review by staff, followed by 60 days to get the nomination before the City Commission. And the second, that is in the nomination process. There's also some clarification with respect to the, how the owner or the jurisdiction consents to the designation, so I'm going to go into those briefly. So as was the case previously, any nomination on private property must be submitted either by the property owner or with the consent of the property owner. For trees on city-owned property, that is not right-of-way, that includes parks, other open spaces and urban renewal lands that are city-controlled, the City Commission would make the final decision following a recommendation by the Natural Resources Committee. And if the nomination is for a tree in a city park, then the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee would also provide an advisory opinion to the NRC prior to going to the City Commission. Next would be city public right-of-way, such as streets and alleys, and the City Commission would make the final decision following the general procedure. And in that case, if the abutting property owner is responsible for the care and maintenance of the nominated tree, then they will be notified, and the consent of that owner is a consideration by the City Commission in the City Commission's decision. Other properties and rights-of-way that are not city-owned, such as ODOT, or Clackamas County, or any other public jurisdiction within the city, the written consent of those agencies would be required for a nomination. And the submittal requirements have been specified to require a report, such as a stand health report, and/or a certified arborist report.
And that's at whose expense?
Expense has not been specified in this code.
Well, no, but I mean, I, I think that's kind of a, a little bit of an undue burden on a private citizen unless they themselves happen to be an arborist, if they have to provide that.
Yeah, but the counter to that is, oh, I think I want to have my tree designated as a heritage tree of city, please have an arborist treat it. Oh, no, I guess I don't. And then they just got their tree extirched, inspected by an arborist.
So one of the, I'll just address that again briefly. Under the site and condition criteria that are part of the code, there is a requirement for an arborist report that looks at the condition of the tree in terms of whether or not it's a hazard. But that is a requirement currently in this, in this proposed code. Next is the review process, which I talked about, the completeness review. And then, within 60 days of the application being deemed complete, it must be scheduled for a review by the Natural Resources Committee at a regularly scheduled meeting. And staff prepares a report based on the criteria in Section D. And if the Natural Resources Committee is not functioning at the time, then that report goes directly to the City Commission. The City Commission's decision has to be scheduled within 30 days of the Natural Resources Committee's decision. And then notices provided to the general public, the nominating applicant, the property owner, or abutting property owner, the chair of the Neighborhood Association, and PrAC if applicable. And then the City Commission make a, make a decision on the final nomination. The designation process has been specified in more clarity for private property. That requires a covenant running with the land that designates the tree as protected, subject to special protections. If it's on city public right-of-way, the designation would be complete upon the listing of the tree or stand of trees on official records and maps and website. And then if the right-of-way is vacated, then the protective covenant is required to be recorded for that tree. Other city properties, such as on city parks and storm ponds or any other urban renewal lands, the designation would be complete upon the City Commission approval of the nomination. And then there's some flexibility as to the form of protection. It might take the form of a restrictive covenant or other instrument or agreement applicable to the specific site. Similarly, other public properties, either ODOT right-of-way or county right-of-way, with their consent and the form of the legal protection would be discussed at the City Commission level and with the, with the applicable jurisdiction. The other part of the code, and probably the most important part of the code from the Natural Resource Committee's perspective, was the criteria for designation. We worked a lot on this, and we decided that we would have two sections of criteria. The first section being the heritage criteria, and the second section being the site and condition criteria. The heritage criteria have to do with the significance of the tree or stand of trees from a historical or cultural perspective, and also from an ecological perspective. So in the heritage criteria, at least one through four of those criteria must be met, and those are listed here. So the tree must have made a significant contribution to the broad pattern of Oregon City's history, or the tree or trees is associated with the life of a person or group of historic significance to Oregon City, or the tree represents a significant and distinguishable presence within Oregon City, or the tree or stand has age, size, or species significance, horticultural or ecological, which contributes to Oregon City's heritage status. Those were the heritage criteria that they decided, and at least one of those would have to be met to move the nomination forward. The site and condition criteria, one through, sorry, Roman numeral I through III, I guess, all required to be met, and that entails a report that the tree is not irreplausibly damaged, diseased, hazardous, or unsafe, or the applicant is willing to have the tree or stand of trees treated to alleviate any damage, disease, or hazard. That the tree be not listed as invasive on any regionally accepted plant list, and that the proposed tree or stand, if located on private property or on public property that is not Oregon City, that the abutting owner or owner consents to that designation and agrees to sign a protective covenant. Finally, this is the language that was in the original code, was what protections are put into place upon the nomination, and these are also included in the protective covenant or would be included in the instrument that protects the tree. It may not be removed, topped, or otherwise altered unless permitted by this section of code. The applicant to remove a tree must, he has the burden of proof showing that, you know, the burden imposed on the continued presence of the tree, the burden imposed on the city by the continued presence of the tree outweighs the public benefit provided by the tree. So that's a very subjective determination, but there's some, there are some aspects of this which are not considered burdens, and that includes few obstruction, maintenance, and infrastructure impacts or tree hazards that can be properly avoided or controlled by pruning or maintenance. Finally, the recognition of heritage tree stands is provided both through the covenant and through the furnishing of a plaque. There is some discretion here for the city to charge a fee to cover the cost of providing the plaque. You know, to date, we have only had four designations, and the city has paid for the plaques for all of those. We also looked at the definitions in the code. The tree stand definition in the code, the NRC felt that that definition should state that a stand is three or more trees which together provide, or create a mutual canopy continuous over 80 or more percent of the area within the boundaries of the stand. Previously, this had been based on proximity of trunks of trees, and there was a lot of discussion about that. And finally, it settled on a canopy definition. And that was the only definition that was amended in the code. There was some discussion about how you submitted a tree, an individual tree, or two trees. The idea was that you would just submit two trees on the same form as individual heritage trees, and three or more you would submit as a stand. So basically, that was it. There were, there were nine iterations of the amendments, I've got all of them. There was a lot of work done on the process of designation, but I would love to hear any comments or concerns you have about this.
Do you have any process for a removal of, of, like, let's say, a tree gets struck by lightning, or it becomes hazardous to the point where it becomes public hazard.
Of a designated tree?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't tested this yet, but the idea is that.
Not that I want that to happen, but.
Well, E3 does talk about removing it due to poor health or hazard.
I can, I can give you a real example. My in-laws have a very large fir tree that had, and it was literally struck by light, I mean, it's probably 300 or 400 feet tall. I mean, it was really tall, it was struck by lightning right in the middle, and the fire started burning down through its trunk, and it was, we, we were able to, we know that that tree was over 200 years old, and it was a county-designated heritage tree, and unfortunately, they had to cut it down because.
Arborists call those time bombs.
Yeah, it was literally burning internally.
Yeah.
From being struck by lightning.
Interesting.
And we happened to be there that day when it was hit. It was pretty weird. It's still designated, but it's not physically.
Designated stone.
Yes, it's, well, like the one, like the, at the elm, yeah. So I have a question. Do you, what I would have loved to have seen, and I borrowed the city code here, I would have liked to have seen the clean version and the last track changes version.
Okay.
So I could figure out what was changed.
Yeah, that was actually, my question is, I'd like to be able to compare this to what's been changed compared to the original.
Well, I could certainly do that for you.
Just the last, not the, all nine of them, just the very last one.
Right, yeah, no problem. I can send that along as soon as I get a hold of it.
We initially adopted this in 2008 as part of our legislative code amendments, even though it wasn't part of, Chapter 17 is our land exception, section, Chapter 16 is our subdivision section, and anything else, you don't have to go through the full legislative notification requirement if it's in any of the chapters. So since we adopted it through the, that public process, I'm thinking we'll bring this back, but it won't be your typical legislative file. We're just going to bring it back as a staff report with requesting a recommendation to the City Commission for their consideration, so we can include those, that, that final redline version and the clean version when we bring it back.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So I guess if, what we're looking for tonight, if there's anything that we've told you so far that kind of jumps out, or raises concerns, or you'd like more info on for when we bring it back, would be helpful.
In these areas, it's an interesting issue about expense, and I can understand if there's a really legitimate heritage tree on somebody's private property, and the city moves in and wants to declare that.
We would never declare, it wouldn't be us.
They would.
It would, it's, this is, this is, this is non-regulatory, this is volunteer on private property. So to us, the expense associated with a general arborist report on the condition, we believe, should be borne by the applicant, when it's on their property to their benefit, is my personal opinion. It'd be different if I had a Natural Resources officer or a urban forestry department with the forester that I could send, I don't have those resources, I'd have to go pay someone to go do it.
So you're saying that the property owner initiates the process?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be the property owner, it can be any citizen, but the property owner has to consent to it.
Right, so I can't come to your house and designate your tree without your consent, right? So I mean.
Right, item, item 2A on private property says nominations on private property shall be submitted by the property owner or accompanied by the property owner's written consent.
So where it gets more difficult is if somebody comes in and says, I want to designate that grove of trees on that city park. Well, who pays? That, that, that was honestly the big one we struggled with on Waterboard Park. It's like, how do you, is the city going to pay for an arborist report for 15-acre park to look at all the, I mean, we really struggled with what to do here, and we haven't remedied it here. I mean, we're not saying you have to, we're, we're being ambiguous here just because, you know, if we say it, the burden's on the applicant, whoever submits it, you know, does that, does that, you know, it obviously makes it more difficult for someone if they believe that a public resource should be put up, should be considered, right? Because there's no way someone's going to pay to do 15 or 20 acres, can't afford it.
They might.
Maybe, you're right, I shouldn't say never, they may, but it's highly unlikely.
A neighborhood association might.
Just in context, how much would it cost for like a tree? Pete, have you seen any?
For an arborist report?
Just an assessment?
It can range, but anywhere from 250 to 1600, $2,000, depending.
Just going to report?
Depends on the condition of the tree, how high they got to climb, if you've got the trunk splitting, they have to climb up there and see if it's going to fail or not, if it's rotted.
If it's prone to disease.
Right, and some of them are beautiful trees in great condition.
Do you guys have them designated on a map?
Yes, we do. It's not public yet, but it is, has been done by GAS, and the trees are on the website, but.
Yeah, it'd be nice to add it to, see web maps.
Yeah.
Does the map get approved as an exhibit, or just as reference material?
It's reference material.
Okay. Because if it's approved.
It's not a regulatory map, it's.
It's just a map.
It's, it's a map, as part of the code, I'm supposed to keep a list as well as the locations, so that's.
Just for your information.
Well, it's not clear, I mean, it's a public record if somebody asked, I mean, these things were, were nominated publicly, they were approved by the commission publicly, so I would imagine they're a public record. It's not proprietary, there's nothing on there that's.
Yeah, it'll be selection of the maps that are on the city website, there's various maps, it would be one of them, and then there'd be a link to it in the Heritage Tree section of the website, so.
It'd be great to get a, you know, you could imagine someday, a part of a walking tour of Heritage Trees, I mean, it'd be pretty neat if you had a, a mess.
There's a state, there's a state map.
Right, and so, you know, if we could get a mass of these, where you could walk around to, you know, especially if they're, I mean, that was one of the things we struggled with, should they, should be able to view them from the public right-of-way, right? So you can walk along without, obviously trespassing to see some beautiful specimen tree in a backyard.
Legan Swigo wrapped theirs in gold silk and put glass medallions on them a few years back.
All of them?
All of them.
How many do they have? Do you know? I mean, round up roughly.
They've got quite a few. Well, I, let me.
More than four?
Let me take that back, they didn't put them, they, we have like 30 of them, yeah, 32, but we didn't put them on all of them, but we put them on several.
Lot of them, yeah.
Yeah, that was quite a spectacle.
And that'd be a great.
There was an AmeriCorps employee that bought the, bought the silk, and sewed it all together and wrapped it in various configurations around the tree. They got a ladder and put it up as high as possible, and then there was a, you know, an etched glass medallion put on them.
Pretty cool.
For photographs, it was pretty amazing, yeah.
Well-dressed trees.
Yeah. Only in Legan Swigo.
Really, you know, the, the, the origination of this, for you, those of you who weren't here, I mean, it was really supposed to be, you know, a way to celebrate heritage trees. It was, it's voluntary, it's non-regulatory, you know. We, we had some issues with one, and that kind of led to a discussion of, can we change this? You know, what's the definition of a grove? What's the definition of a stand? How do you process it? We took a long time with the Public Works one, because we just didn't know how to, I mean, we didn't expect a whole park to be nominated at once, and how to, what to do with it, to be honest. We, we expected one or two trees to come in at a time. And so we think we've, we've tried to at least clarify on how things will be processed.
Does any notice go up to a D8 cat drivers in the metropolitan area? These are the last ones known, the first ones to knock over a tree.
Or nick them.
Really? You know, subdivision, you approve it and all that kind of stuff.
You mean like that big tree on South End Road that I was concerned about?
Yeah.
It's gone, unfortunately.
Yeah, well.
No, it doesn't. We haven't, we haven't typically seen one on a private property, I mean, typically they're associated with old historic homes. We haven't run into a situation where you've got a five-acre lot, and you nominate a tree in the middle, and then it comes in to be subdivided, not that that wouldn't happen, so that's a good point, I mean, that's the importance of the list. Pete, they also record something against the property, don't they?
Yeah, private property would have a restrictive covenant on it.
So the CC, the covenant should show up on the title report if you were to come in, in terms of, you know, whether it be easement, covenant would show up and should show up on the site plan?
And, you know, I should mention that the language of that covenant does allow for. And, you know, I should mention that the language of that covenant does allow for removal in the case of hazard, provided there's an arborist report that proves that.
Yeah, but just because you're subdividing it isn't a hazard, which I see in the thing which is...
Yeah.
Right, right.
And that's a good level of protection that I'm not gonna...
I would be surprised if somebody had to develop a property that they would voluntarily nominate a tree. It could happen, I'd, but I'd be, I, I, like I said, I think where we're seeing this are on, you know, old properties that just have single lot and some other trees made it this long.
Well, I could see somebody, if it was like on the edge or a corner.
Sure, yeah.
But, yeah, if it's, the grove in the middle of the five acre plot.
Yeah, not likely.
Oh, you could develop around it.
Yeah.
Well, we, and, you know, as part of this, you know, we also updated the tree protection code, a part of the code, which does allow, um, smaller lot sizes, administrative variances, to setbacks, to protect grows.
Right.
So I mean, we really were trying to, from the incentive side, to provide tree protection. There really wasn't an appetite to get into more of a regulatory approach to tree protection on private property.
This is a universal problem throughout the state of Oregon, protection of trees.
Yeah, but just following up on the email I sent earlier today to the N R C and various other people. The city of Tigard has adopted, it's a fairly, uh, progressive code from what I understand.
Twalton has too, I think.
Uh, sorry, Twalton, yeah. Oh, both, yeah. And Tigard's is based on a lot of, uh, input over several years. And they are the first, maybe one of the first cities to actually use soil volume as a determinant of tree species and those sorts of things. So, um, scientifically based, and that's always good. Um, but yeah, that's part of a larger discussion. So are we taking any action on this, or are we just making comments?
It was more for us to introduce it to you, get any comments, concerns, and then we'll bring it back, um, probably in January.
Sometime in January.
I would think, yeah.
Are we going down the line, Charles?
She has more comments, she has questions.
No, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
Well, I mean, it was Paul and then...
Yeah, I, I don't have anything else. Yeah, thanks, though.
Zach?
Um, no, just, I mean, I'm, I, I wouldn't say concerned, but, um, about the passing on the burden of cost, you know, there might be a way to play with the language to distinguish whether, where that burden goes, but, um, I could go either way. If anything, that's the only part that jumps out at me, but it's great.
Damon?
Um, I have kind of a what-if. I happen to have a roughly ninety-year-old apple tree in my yard that is pretty close to five feet diameter. I have a D B H because that's where it splits. Could I designate it as a heritage tree?
It probably was a part of an older homestead, wouldn't you think?
Well, it's the original. The house was built in twenty-three, so I'm assuming it's, I know it's over seventy-five years old because I did have an arborist look at it, but...
You can propose any tree, the heritage tree.
But I just didn't know if it'd fit under the other broadleaf tree species designation or if it...
That is really a guidance chart. I mean, I think that sort of says, these, these types of trees are eligible.
And it's clearly connected with an important person because I'm a planning commissioner.
Absolutely. The maybe, the maybe pioneer homestead.
Yeah.
I don't know, we've seen your records.
Yeah, true. So I, I just, there, there was just kind of a what-if. I could see somebody coming, especially in some of these older neighborhoods, some of the original fruit trees and, and that, that, you know, it's not an oak, but, you know, I have two eighty-year-old fruit trees in my, you know, and I know other people who have small orchards of, well, it's now like five or six instead of the fifteen or twenty when I was a kid, but, okay.
So does that other cover something like that? Because I was making a...
The in-particular part of that clause allows for other considerations, so...
Because if the monkey tree was still living on Bud Lane's property over on Madison Street, that would, would definitely have been designated because it's, it's not a species that's common to this area, but I mean, it was a spectacular tree. It was pretty incredible. And, uh, they, they took care of it over the years, and finally, I think disease just got to it and they had to take it down and...
Yeah, on fifteenth, there's a magnolia tree that's huge. I mean, it's like thirty-five feet tall. It's...
I think, I think, like I said, I think the thing to remember here is that this isn't meant to be a regulatory tool. You need to make findings against it. It'll stand up in court. This was really meant to be...
Well, I just was curious what the...
Holistic and, you know, if someone really, really wanted it, we'd probably find a way to make it happen.
Yeah.
Someone said, you know, "This tree is very important to me. I've lived here fifty years, and it's always been here." You know, like I said, this isn't meant to be punitive in any way.
Yeah, and I'm willing to pay to have it maintained if you're willing to give me a plaque.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I just can, like I said, it's the holistic question of what is the bounds and...
I think it was really just trying to kind of suck, you know, kinda show what the intent is, what we're trying to accomplish, but it's certainly not exclusionary, I don't believe. Unless it was in such, you know, poor, poor condition, you know, there could be other factors.
Yeah, no, I just, I wasn't sure if it was like, okay, this is what we're thinking of and, you know, but it's, this is what we're thinking of, but other things may fit.
Yeah, see, it would be great if there was...
Better to ask than to...
Was something that even, instead of just saying other down there, just maybe another sentence that said, "Other trees may be considered blah, blah, blah. They meet a certain..."
Yeah, like, is it broadleaf or is it deciduous?
Or C section D or something.
Yeah, something like that, okay. So, so how do you think this ordinance dovetails with our Tree City USA designation?
Well, I think it would help. Uh, every year when we submit our application, we provide an update of activities related to policy and planting. So if we do something beyond meeting the minimum requirements for Tree City USA, every year, we tell them what it was. Uh, for example, last year, we had the wider planter strips adopted with the T S P, so that counted as an additional thing. Um, this would count as an additional policy that we've adopted to foster tree appreciation. They're very flexible at, at the Arbor Day Foundation as to what qualifies, you know.
Doesn't hurt.
No, it doesn't. So I guess I am, let me not start the sentence with so because that's very bad. Let me say that, am I the only one that was a little bit disturbed by the fact that getting absolutely permission from local governments is, that caught my eye right away.
What, what page are you on?
I'm on page two. And the reason that caught my eye is primarily because I think that a local government who adopts an ordinance or other local governments need to be held to a higher standard since they're the implementing organizations. And I think that while this is not as proactive as I'd like to see it, I think that the jurisdictions need to be consulted, but I'm not sure I would want to see them poo-poo something because they didn't like it. And I, it's, it's kind of in the same vein to me as, uh, if a public entity owns a historically significant building, this is no different having a historically significant tree, that they would be able to say, "Oh, I'm sorry, I'm local government X, Y, or Z or county buzzkill that I don't want this tree designated." I think, I think they should be consulted, but I don't think we need to get their absolute permission unless they can show us, "Oh, this is gonna be a right-of-way issue," or this is gonna, you know, this is gonna be some other major problem.
Denise, which item are you talking about?
I'm talking about, um...
D?
Other jurisdictions, under C and D, maybe B.
Under two D, county, state, or federal right-of-way. Well, we discussed that in some detail.
I know, I'm just saying, I think it's the only, it jumped out at me right away.
Well, I mean, I don't see how we can impose something on jurisdiction. We have no jurisdiction of...
Well, we can nominate a, you know, if I wanted to go down tomorrow and nominate the county courthouse for the national register, I don't have to get their permission to do it.
Put it on the local inventory you did.
We put it on the local inventory. We didn't ask them, but that was in the eighties, today, yes.
So I mean, there's different levels of...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just...
I mean, I know, I get where you're coming from.
Yeah, I know.
I think what, what was frustra, I gotta be careful here.
That's okay.
This was meant to be a celebration of historic trees in the home, and it became a tool against, it became a tool used in the determination of where things should be constructed, and that was never the intent of it. So how do we balance that, I think, is what we're struggling with, right? Right now, we, you know, if it's city-owned, we go through the process. You could certainly see a situation of, we need to expand the ramps on two oh five, and there's a tree there so it gets nominated for historic preservation or for designation. Then what do we do? And so I struggle with that, right? And maybe, maybe that is the avenue. Maybe we should have every tool available to us if we don't agree with another jurisdiction's doing and they're not considering...
Never let that stop us.
Or, you know, is it the other side of, "We've exhausted all of our appeals, so we're gonna nominate this thing." So that's, that's where, that's where we struggle.
I don't wanna see it used as, I wanna see...
But that's what, that's how it is, though.
Yeah, I wanna see it used as a legitimate tool if there's something, you know, out there because, again, I'm thinking back to, you know, the Abernathy Elm, and I realize that it, it did finally have some problems, but I think the state could have...
Done more.
Could have done more. They could have, you know, we pointed that out to them years ago that it needed to be inoculated, needed to be taken care of because it was so significant, and it's, you know, got a plaque next to it now and there, but maybe the other Elms are gonna start to come up, which is, I've noticed there's some sprouts coming up, so I'm hoping that maybe we'll have a, a daughter or a son of that Abernathy, of that elm, because that was a fairly significant tree.
I mean, how much of, let's say, let's say that the Abernathy Elm was still alive today. I mean, should we take the initiative to convince them of the significance and why it should be protected rather than just say, "Oh, you're not listening"? I mean, so...
No, I think that, that's the way to go. I, I wanna see it be more proactive in terms of if we are aware as citizens and as a jurisdiction that there are some significant specimens, then we ought to take the initiative to make sure that those things are called out or that they are recognized, rather than, you know, hoping and waiting for somebody, or, you know, maybe you put a bug in somebody's ear and say, "Hey, Damon, I know about this tree. Why don't you nominate it to the, you know..."
I agree with, I agree with what Denise is saying.
So there needs to be some sort of a balance. I mean, I think, again, this, this is, this is only to our benefit, I, I believe.
Well, I, I think if, if you go back to the, the very first, uh, paragraph in this section that...
The preamble?
Well, item B one, under general procedure, any citizen can nominate a tree. So, you know, that, that's the initiation of the process. Uh, when it comes to, uh, whether or not that tree goes beyond the nomination process and gets accepted, then I, I think it's presumptuous for us to say that we can force, whether it's a private property owner or any government agency to do that.
I'm only talking about the government.
Well, I'm just saying, I think it's equally presumptuous to say that we can force another government agency to do that. Now, we have some opportunity to testify by going to them and saying, "Here's our justification for why we think that that should be done," and try to convince them. But I, I don't think there's any leverage that we can take to, to force them to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, at least, at least not at this point. Um, before you go on, I noticed something that kind of is a typo on two B.
Mm-hmm. Not to be.
Uh, the last paragraph says, "If the nomination is for a city park," not, "If the nomination is within a city park." Because...
There's a few little typos and...
But, I mean, that one's like, huh, Prac doesn't get to talk about it unless you do the whole park, as opposed to there's just one tree.
I'm not aware of any parks that are so little of trees, but...
That's a good one.
But I mean, it's just the way it's written.
But I, I agree with what Charles was saying. I mean, from a process standpoint, if it can go to the Natural Resources Committee who sees that this is, um, you know, an ODOT property, they should determine the next steps on how to approach ODOT or something.
Well, can it even get there if they say, if they say no?
No, there's a section, it's not really, the timing of that, uh, consent by that jurisdiction is not really specified in here. What is specified is some sort of instrument needs to be approved by the city commission.
Okay, well then...
So at some point, the city commission might say, "We approve this nomination pending consent of," which then gives you more impetus when you go to that jurisdiction to say, "Look, the, the city council..."
Illegally, you would get that hammered out as early in the process of...
Oh, sure, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, the city council invariably asks staff, "Have you gotten consent from that local jurisdiction to do this designation?" And you'll get that bulgy-eyed analysis.
Well, and, and I, I think realistically, if, if we were to ident, let's say hypothetically, we found a, a tree on an ODOT piece of property that we thought was a legitimate heritage tree, uh, you can make an appeal through our state representative or somebody...
Yeah, I'd just go talk to Matt Garrett and say, "I think this should be designated."
I mean, there, there are ways of approaching that, that we, we can find an advocate that has the authority to take some initiative on that.
Anybody could get it done.
Yeah, I, I don't...
Well, I'm just saying, I just, I just wanted to bring it up to see if I was the only one that noticed that. And then my la, my question on page seven is that, now, maybe this is being, now, I did read this late at night. Seventeen oh four, you have thirteen sixty, you have a definition. I, I was not aware that trees could, could communicate, be communicable or have a communicable disease that somebody could get. Is, is that something?
Or, or insects.
Well, I know they have insects, but I didn't know if, you know, if I touched a tree and it had a disease, could I get that disease? And that's, that's kind of what that meant to me.
You know, you'll be growing pine.
No, fungi, fungi, fungus.
Well, it says, if you type it...
Harbor-ing a communicable disease.
Similar to the Elm at Carnegie in the issue that they...
There's some stigma associated with it.
Well, there's a, I know trees can transmit disease to each other.
Yeah, no, I, I read that completely as within, because it says, "And to cause the decline of adjacent nearby trees," you know, and so...
Yeah, well, as I said, I read it, and it's just struck me as, as odd.
Two, that's two other trees, you know, in...
You need better lighting at night.
Oh, I had, I had plenty of light, believe me. I was, I had caffeine. I was, I was buzzing through this.
Any other...
Theoretically, you could have a tree that's diseased that you don't see like what we see at Carnegie, where it's transferred from tree to tree.
Right, right.
You'd just be wrong.
You got chelms disease.
I guess I'm not the arborist person, transferable, trim, you know.
Transmogrification, yes.
What's the right word for it? Disease that hops from tree to tree?
Communicable.
Communicable sounds right, yeah.
Tom?
I don't need to add anything more to what's already been said.
So we, we won't put this on as a solo item. We'll put it on when we have something else, when we have a planning commission. That's why I'm thinking it's gonna be that one in January. I don't think, I'm not aware of anything off the top of my head for the December, December meeting.
And then we'll have our track changes?
Yeah, we'll have track changes and then a clean version.
And a whole new board.
Who knows?
So, yeah, I really appreciate all the work that, that you guys have done, and please, when you see the N R C, let them know that...
Oh, yeah, I will.
It's one of those things that, it's a pain in the butt to hammer out, and as you said, nine different, you know, sets of changes. Ten, because I found that one time. But, uh, it just, I, I know what it's like to try to write any sort of policy ordinance, and it's a, so thank you for all the work.
I will, some of the details.
I will, thanks.
Okay, so, Tony, we have any communications?
I just wanted to give you an update on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. As many of you are aware, the, the city commission approved, uh, the Framework Master Plan, the, uh, multimodal mixed-use area designation, the comp plan amendment, the zone change, the implementing zoning for Blue Heron property. As I've been updating you, uh, recently, many of you recall that we had a five million dollar appropriation from the governor's office, and our submittal was due to them March thirty-first of two thousand fifteen. That date got bumped up to December fifteenth of fourteen, so, in about a week. So, um, we were made aware of that about a month, month and a half ago, so we've been working to meet that deadline. And really, as part of the appropriation, there are three main things that have to hap-
happen. The governor's office needs to sign off on a financial package for how the Riverwalk or the improvements would be paid for and constructed before they'll release any of their funds. The, a local public agency needs to have a property interest, whether that be actual property or easement in the public ask, access component along the Willamette River. And the state parks needs to be asked to be involved in the planning, interpretation, and potentially operation of any public investment on that property. So, for the first one, we've prepared a financial package that we're going to submit to the governor's office. And as many of you recall, we talked about $4 million for the design and engineering of the Riverwalk and then another 30 to 35 million for the construction of the Riverwalk itself. We're prepared to release an RFP for what we're calling 10% drawings. So essentially looking at where should, the route should be, is it feasible, are there any fatal flaws? And we've put together, we've identified 1.7, off the top of my head, sorry, it's a little bit like 1.7 million for that initial design and engineering. And then we're proposing to construct what we call Phase One, which we believe would be on, on the PG dam component potentially of about $10 million. So we've identified those funds, so that includes the $5 million from the state plus additional funds from metro, local agencies and some grants that we hope to be successful on to complete that funding package. We're currently negotiating with Portland General Electric on an easement across their facility, so across the dam and out to the dance floor as well as Mr. Higurkin. We're very close to an agreement with Portland General Electric, we hope to have that later this week. And then we have a letter of intent or a term sheet signed by Mr. Higurkin outlining the terms of the easement. So we're in the process of writing up that legal agreement and hopefully have that signed by him in the near future as well. And we have entered into a memorandum of understanding with all of our partners. So Clackamas County, for example, has federal lobbyists in Washington DC that we're able to utilize for this project to identify funding at the federal level. And we're also able to use their lobbyists at the state level. We also have, are able to use Metro's lobbyists to assist there. Metro's agreed to take on the, the lead for the design and engineering of the Riverwalk. So we just finished the planning process and Oregon City was the face of that. We were the, we were the ones who entered into the contract, we were the liaison between the consultant team so that they had one person to talk to, but really behind that, we meet at least once a week with our partners and that includes every one of the agencies and their representatives. And we work as a team in a partnership in decision-making and how that, so there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes even though we speak as one person, one voice out in front. So that same model's being utilized for the Riverwalk design and engineering where Metro's going to take the lead, but my staff is actually on as a representative for the decision-making process that goes into how that contract's managed, what the scope of work is, decisions that are made, whether it be route, or whatever decisions are going to come up when we go through this process. So while we may not be the name at the very front, we are continuing to work under a very successful model that we've used really since day one in terms of decision-making as a partnership where everybody has a fair share and a fair stake and a fair say at the table on how decisions are made. So we hope to have, to show the state that we have those, those agreements and then, oops, I'm sorry, I was talking about the memorandum of understanding. We've taken on, as Oregon City, the operation and maintenance once the facility's constructed on the long-term. And then we have asked the state and they did sign on to be a partner in the liaison between the partnership and the Native American tribes of the state to include them in, in the discussions that are happening and in the cultural interpretation that happens on that site, as well as assisting us in terms of the large-scale engineering and, you know, just design of a public amenity of that size. So we believe we've met the, made the three criteria that are necessary for the sale of those bonds, those $5 million. We're actually heading down, we'll be in front of the House Ways and Means tomorrow morning at 8:00, giving them an update on where we're at in the process and potentially starting to look for additional funds for the additional phases. We just, we don't think we're going to have $35 million at the time of construction, so we probably would have to phase this out unless something changes. Not that we're going, not to, going to continue to try to find those funds, which include state-level, federal-level philanthropic grants. You know, we're looking at all of those opportunities and we'll continue to, it'll be an ongoing effort so that, that, those timelines will change. And we are hoping to.
Make sales.
Release the RFP within the next 30 days for the design and engineering of the Riverwalk and then have a targeted construction date of spring, summer of 2016 for Phase One. So a lot going on there. We also have a friends group that we're trying to initiate, Metro and the state, Metro and Oregon City, each put in seed money essentially to create a friends group that we would hope would be able to stand on its own, be able to accept donations as a 501(c)(3), lend support when needed to letter, write, campaign, whatever we're going to need as we move forward. Lobby, yeah, moving forward.
They had a tour and that's the last notification we've had.
Yep, so.
Are you going to mention the ASLA award?
Yeah, the, we were awarded, no, you got me though, I'm drawing the blank on what it was called, the Merit Award. So it wasn't the highest, but we were awarded for the planning effort that went into creating the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Framework Plan. They also, they understood, they appreciated the public involvement process as well as the significance and opportunity that providing public access and habitat restoration along the Willamette and to the falls means to the state of Oregon. So we're very proud to receive that. American Society of Landscape Architects, so, yeah, so hopefully more to come in the future. That is the big one right at the moment. America's Tire, you'll be seeing. Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. Many of you may recall, city commission approved that, it was appealed to Luba. Luba remanded it because it wasn't consistent with the Metro 2040 map. We amended the Metro 2040 map to be consistent with the adopted concept plan. That was, that amendment to the 2040 map was included in the urban growth boundary decision. The urban growth boundary decision was adopted and approved by Metro. That was based on the urban and rural reserves decision. Both of those were appealed to the Court of Appeals, but ours was put on hold while they waited for a decision on urban and rural reserves. The legislature came in and did their big fix, their big grand bargain. So essentially where we got to was the Court of Appeals found no issue with the approval of the 2040 map amendment. It was not appealed to the Supreme Court, therefore the map amendment is in place. So when the first appeal happened at Luba, the city commission determined that once all of the appeals are addressed, that that Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan will be brought back to the Planning Commission for public hearing and adoption again. So in, probably in the next couple of months, we'll be moving, providing some additional findings. The city commission remanded it back to the, to the Planning Commission with limited review, essentially looking at infrastructure, public amenity, public facilities, drawn up, it's been a little while, police and fire. And so we're going to provide some additional findings that we believe help support the case and then go through the adoption process again. Once we get the concept plan adopted and all the appeals are exhausted, we do need to come back and write the implementing ordinance. We created a couple of new zones out there, there are design standards that need to be in place that don't exist today, so it's just hard to budget and put a timeline on it knowing, I mean, I think, what have we had, about seven years of appeals to deal with Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan? So it is something that has to happen, it's just a matter of when do we expend funds and the staff time to do it? My, my position is once the concept plan's adopted and appeals are exhausted, before I spend resources on writing a code that may or may not be implemented.
Got a little bigger fires, a little closer to, to home to deal with first.
We do, yeah.
There's smoke out there, but.
Yeah.
Which is a good fire, not a bad fire.
Yeah, sign code. Obviously, the commission recommended approval to the city commission on the sign code with, we weren't, we weren't going to be able to get a work session in plus the public hearings under the current commission, so we decided to wait and went to the new commission, was seated. Update them. So their first hearing in February is when we continued it to, we're going to ask them for a continuance that night and then I'm going to get it on the February work session so that we can walk them through everything. And then hopefully they'll continue with their adoption process in March and April for the sign code. As you're well aware, the big thing there is implementation. We're working on an implementation plan right now. You could realistically see one taking up significant amount of time of one of my four planners to try to get that implemented, dealing with code enforcement, education, noticing.
Well, and it's good that it's in the February work session, you're talking about it because that lets them do input prior to budgeting, so.
Yeah.
Because that's clearly where they're going to have to put up or shut up.
Right. And then the other one, so the last time we did code, major code amendments was 2008 when we adopted this heritage code. After we do code amendments, obviously, it's always a for certain that on the next day when it goes into place, we find the typo or cross-reference that did not happen. So we have about seven years, six years of code cleanup that we've identified. So I'm hoping to bring that forward as well as we enter into the next fiscal year. I need to, we need to get a couple of these things under our belt. I don't want to have too many things in the fire at once. I've kind of felt like we went that way for the last year and a half and kind of ran my guys ragged here, so we'll try to pace ourselves a little bit. But that would be something that we'd be looking at, not wholesale rewrites, it's trying to clean up some things, some discrepancies we found, clarifications, cross-referencing, typical cleanup-type fashion.
Continual process.
Isn't there an app?
An app for that?
An app for that? We should make one with all the time we've spent on these things.
Code Cleanup App.
Next one, yeah.
Deletes everything.
I think those were the major.
I wanted to ask.
Updates that, that, that we're working on right now.
Couple of things that we had had in the past that have moved on. So what is the status of the assisted living, retirement, memory care facility that was approved that's on South End Road?
Currently, the engineering department is still reviewing the civil plans. The building official issued a foundation-only plan and no other permits are going to be released until the, several things have to happen. The, since it's a state licensed facility, the state building official has to approve the building plans and any revisions that come out of that. The building official has to receive a full set of building plans that meet his requirements. That hasn't happened yet. And the civil plans need to be final signed off by Public Works, estimates of public improvements and other things. So there are, there's a ways to go.
Okay. Were there any circumstances with regard to the premature second round of tree removals that happened that wasn't supposed to happen, as I understand?
Well, nothing since the hearings, no. The four trees that were designated on the plan for protection have been fenced off. The other trees have been removed and the final mitigation plan has yet to be submitted. So, but the condition of approval is written in such a way that, you know, there will be the full amount of mitigation trees required for those trees that were removed.
I've got one quick question about an oak tree that's on the north property line that is kind of right on the fence line.
Right.
It's sitting there as a snag and God forbid, they leave it there, but if they do, do you guys have any kind of ability to get them to remove that? Because it looks really bad there.
Right. If it's, if it's a hazard, we could, we could probably get, ask them to look at it. Yeah.
So did they receive any punitive? Did they, did they, were they fined in any way for the premature removal the second time or the first time?
No, the way our code is written.
I mean, I know they got a stop work order, but that obviously didn't mean anything.
They had the stop work orders and they had to do the mitigation plan revision. So that's kind of the way our code is. And if you're, if you're submitting plans that meet our code, then we don't impose fines. So we did not impose any kind of violation fines in that case. We didn't take them to municipal.
They made a good faith effort to remediate as soon as they were aware of the problem and so there wasn't really a reason to wind it through the courts, which probably, the judge probably would have said.
Yeah. Go back around, plan.
This is one of the things we really struggle with, with the tree code, is that.
People are bad.
We don't, we don't, the decision was made that we don't want to regulate trees on private property. But we want to regulate trees during development. And so you're kind of stuck in this, you know, limbo of, you know, you shall try to protect the trees to the maximum extent practical. It is the worst sentence in the world when you're a regulator.
Yeah, it is.
Right.
I'm sure there's one that's worse, but that's pretty bad.
But it, it'd rather it say, if it's outside of the construction zone and in the setbacks, it shall be protected.
It's aspirational, Tony.
It is, it's not, it's not, it's not regulatory. And so we struggle when folks say, why are they cutting those trees? And it's like, and why aren't you fighting them? It's, well, because by our code, as long as they mitigate, they can. If they put trees back or they pay to the tree fund, they can cut the tree. You know, so I think there's this perception that all trees are protected and it's, it's not the case and we struggle with that quite a bit.
See, I don't think we should be letting people off so easily with mitigation and that's, that's what really kind of bothers me. I mean, I understand.
Then we need to, then we need to say, you shall not move the tree.
Well, I think when you're, they're in the pre-app, you tell them, you cannot remove anything from this property until you have authorized approvals from the city, period. And if you do that, see, people do that and then think they, they're asking for forgiveness later. And that's, that's just, to me, that just sends the wrong message to, because they know nothing's going to happen to them, so.
Well, your, your point is well-taken, but what we struggle with is how much energy do we spend when your code actually allows that?
Well, I'm, I'm saying that.
And that, that is problematic. If you, if you have a code that doesn't say it's prohibited, it's hard to.
Kind of like bluffing with a two and a four.
Right, exactly. We're trying to hit them with nails instead of a hammer.
Many, many years ago, I, I was involved in a project, it was a, it's a large apartment project and, you know, I, I wasn't involved in the trees at all. I was just working on the architecture of the buildings. And one day I heard that the property owner and one of his guys had cut down a bunch of trees that were like kind of on the, the edge of the hillside and they got arrested by the city of Portland.
Wow. Because the, probably the hillside was going to come down.
I, I don't know the circumstances, but I, when I, I found out the, the property owner and, and one of his guys got arrested for cutting down trees, I thought, wow.
My attention, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to make this a criticism, I'm just trying to understand in my mind, again, we have large trees or larger than two-inch diameter trees and somebody can come in and cut them all down and then we get these trees and, somehow that just doesn't seem right. It's not one for one or two for two, because you, you know, they take a long time to grow. I mean, believe me, it, it pained me to remove the tree that was on my property, you know, if it hadn't been crushing my garage, I probably would have left it there, but I had nowhere to move it. Come to find out after we cut it down, the middle portion of the tree was rotted. I mean, we, you couldn't tell from the outside, but once they cut it down and they opened it up here, you know, I could put my hand in the center of it and pull out pieces of the tree. And I thought, oh my God, you know, how long would that have been before it went all the way and then, you know, fell on my house or something, but.
Could have moved your garage.
Well, we tried, we tried. So I mean, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out how we, how we can, I'm not interested in us going around and, and beating everybody to death with a hammer, but.
Chainsaw.
Or a chainsaw. It's just like other, it's like other things. The word is out. People know they can do X, Y, and Z and they can get, you know, in my opinion, get away with it. And so.
I know about that. I mean, this is a, this doesn't happen very often.
Okay, well, I mean.
These guys.
I'm not talking about South End Road people, I'm just saying in general, in subdivisions, you know, we have people come in and they say, oh, look at all the trees in. you know, we have people come in and they say, oh, look at all the trees and blah, 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 and I said, yeah, but, fine.
The guy behind pizza had it there cut.
Well, yeah.
You are perfectly allowed.
I understand, I'm saying he can't, but I'm just saying that that's the sort of stuff that people get all up in arms about, because the code, you know.
It's whatever perception it is.
And so, you know, we got to, we got to give you.
It's not the code. It is, it was a decision by the elected officials that we're not going to regulate trees on private property. This isn't a code not being applied or us turning our head.
Yeah, well, I'm with you on that, I'm with you, Damon.
And, you know, let's just say you take out a nineteen-inch tree, you got to put back nine two-inchers, and, you know, what we're actually running up against is, you know.
Where do you put them?
Yeah, so we're getting it from both sides, right? We're not regulating enough trees, and we're letting these trees come down, and then when they do mitigate for them, they're going, how am I supposed to put back 130 trees? Where am I putting these? You know, so we've, and we're in the middle trying to say, okay, well, you know, we're trying to find spots throughout the city for these to be planted in, or you put money in the bank. And so, it is a hard one on some of these lots.
So, how does the money in the bank get allocated?
It hasn't been yet, we've just been accumulating it, because up until recently, we've been able to find spots to plant them. Folks would much rather plant them.
I'll come see you, because I know some spots we could put some trees in.
Tony, what about a, what about a bond, like you do in a subdivision, a performance bond, on a site development? You just say, okay, this is what we're going to do, okay? Put up or shut up, and we're going to.
We accept, we, so let's, so you're building a subdivision, and you want to go, before you can plat the lot, so essentially before the lots become legal and you can sell them, you either have to have all your public improvements in, including tree mitigation, or you post surety.
Surety.
So, we essentially take some type of a surety at, I think, about 115 of the cost, and let's say there's a second lift of asphalt, 15 street trees, and 30 mitigation trees. We add it all up, they write us a check, goes into surety, they can go record. So, we do it on the front end, in terms of whatever public improvement or mitigation hasn't been provided, we get money before we'll let them record the plat, which is really, you know, you've got the hammer of recording the plat, and you got the hammer of the CVO on the house, those are kind of your two checks along the way. So, we do collect on those. And then, as those are put in, we reimburse.
I think the biggest point that Denise makes, and it's, it's the point where I think it's the hardest part to grapple with, I don't think anybody has a problem with small insignificant trees being taken down. And we just finished talking about heritage trees. It's that tree that's 100 feet tall, that's been there for 50 or 60 years, that you say, what makes a tree become a heritage tree? It's because it's old, and if people keep cutting trees down when they're teenage trees, they never get old.
Exactly.
Well, and the other thing that, that I think is, the reason why we don't necessarily want to regulate is, the people who go, they cut down all the trees across the street from me where I used to play. You used to play in somebody else's private property, and that's, you know, or they cut down the giant maple that shaded my house, you know, so I didn't have to put in air conditioning, and now I do. Well, too bad, I mean, that's, you know.
It's a, it's a, it's a hard one, as we try to get density in these new homes or new construction in, and.
But we need trees.
How do you balance it? And well, yeah, it's, do you, are there better spots to put it? And you're right, it takes a heck of a long time to replace that canopy.
And I think that may be one thing you want to do with that tree money, is not look at where you can put 120 two-inch trees, but where can you put six, you know, 12-inch trees? And, you know, I mean, just, I think just replacing the canopy around the library, granted, there's going to be construction now, but putting significantly more mature trees in takes care of both problems.
Yeah, I agree, because, you know, the reality is, when you cut down a large tree and you replace it with a bunch of little trees, it's going to take a long time for those little trees to be anything resembling that big tree.
Not in any of our lifetimes.
I think, you know, I think working with Pete and Parks and Public Works, I think all of those are things that we try to do. We have bought larger diameter trees, like the one we put in front of Carnegie, we've put some other larger specimen trees throughout the city, but then also, like, along riparian areas is where we go in and we mass-plant. And so, it's, it's, it's all of those actually are the answer.
We only beaver-proof trees, though. Down by the, put hot sauce on them or something, they don't like that.
What else, Tony?
I think that's, that's, that's all that's, that I've got right, right now.
Okay, move to our turn.
No, this is not the world's record, the world's record is eight fifteen.
Thank you.
Oh, really?
Yeah.